Fire and Rescue first, so let's start the meeting. So this is the March fifteenth twenty twenty-one million meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. The budget review of Fire and Rescue and Highway, so please stand for the pledge allegiance. Hang on, let me just go ahead and see what I'm doing. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I.
And. One nation.
One nation.
Liberty and justice.
For liberty and justice.
Okay, so we're gonna follow the same format that we did last, which is this, this. We're gonna do Fire and Rescue first. Ted and Matt and then Laurie are gonna go through their respective proposed budgets. I'd like you guys to go through it line by line. And talk to us about what's changed from the previous budget. I know there's been some trading back and forth and some new categories, so you have to bridge us through that. Basically, just talk to us about what's changed and what is within the numbers that you've got. I know you've got some backup sheets that we might wanna get to, but for the time being, let's see if we can use this one nice summary spreadsheet that the front office put together. So with that, Ted and Matt, go ahead.
Oh, ten, I have a pen. Hang on.
Yeah, sure, wait a minute.
Ted's going to get last year's.
Okay, sorry, say again?
Ted went to go get last year's budget. He doesn't, didn't have it in front of him.
Last, last year's budget is the column just to the left of the proposed budget.
Okay.
Got it?
Yeah, I'll wait till he comes back in the room.
Okay, fine.
If that's okay.
Yeah, sure. And we're gonna skip through the fire revenues thing at the top there. That'll be the number we said at the end, so let's just go to expenses. Just, you know, Karen is the one who's driving the screen there. She's the one who has the spreadsheet. All right, so I was just saying, I'd like you to just go through line by line. And just bridges from what was in the budget last year to what we're proposing for this year. Those are the last two columns on the spreadsheet that you got on the screen there. Let's, let's save the discussion about the roof till the end. How's that?
Yep, that's fine.
All right, go ahead.
I've gone down in, in most of my line items based on our expenditures for this year. Year-to-date and taking into consideration that we still have, you know, a couple months of the year left. For most of my, most of my Firematic line items, I reduced. Let's see, I'm just, I'm just looking. I sat down with Nicole briefly the other day, and we were able to straighten out a couple of issues with either things coming out of the wrong line item through, through, you know, no one's fault. It's just, it's, sometimes it's hard to tell whether something, whether a purchase is new equipment or whether an invoice is for new equipment or repair or, you know, things like that. So I, I tried to help her get a better breakdown of which line items things should come out of in her accounting versus our, our, you know, breakout sheet that we give you every year. Cause I know that you guys don't break things out as, as finely as we do.
Right.
We, we try to keep track of each, each vendor to whatever degree we can and say, you know, this is what we spent, you know, year-to-date and year, beginning to year-end, you know, per vendor, so that we know, you know, how, what we spent for Verizon, what we spent for Central Hudson, what we spent, you know, for each, for each vendor that we deal with, to whatever degree that's possible. Like I said, sometimes it's a little hard to keep track of whether things are contractual services or new equipment purchases, you know, because some of the vendors are the same. So I, I told her that we'll try to keep a closer tab on that and watch, you know, when, when we sign vouchers, we'll try to keep an eye on what the things are for, and so if we're taking something out of an incorrect line item, we can, you know, try to head it off. She's not trying to balance all kinds of accounting errors at the end of the year. And it's a lot better than it used to be. Like years ago, we had a huge problem with this, and it, it's getting incrementally better, but it's, we're still not quite there yet. So based on her, you know, the spreadsheets that she gives us every month for what's been spent per budget line item, I was able to reduce almost every line item this year. And I, and I, I broke things out a little bit differently in my, my budget request sheets. The, as far as our contractual expenses, it came down about three thousand dollars based on we, we haven't had to spend as much on the breathing air, a couple of other categories. The cost of our, some of our service testing has gone down. We haven't spent as much on your monitor service, a couple other odds and ends. So those, those line items I was able to reduce from, well, per my request at least, from twenty-nine-five to twenty-six-two. Physicals, I reduced about five hundred dollars, cause we're, you know, going back three years, we haven't exceeded ten thousand dollars in the last three years. So we were able to reduce that in line with your proposal there on the right side of your spreadsheet. The training and education, Lori and I had a couple of duplicate things. Well, I, just CPR first aid, AED training, we've, we've both been showing that in both of our budgets for the past few years. And that was an oversight on my part. I didn't catch on that I had that in my budget and she had it in hers.
Okay, good.
So fifteen hundred dollars is, is, you know, that's plenty of money for that. We don't need to have, have that in both of our line items.
Uh, Steve.
I don't think we've spent anywhere close to that in the last few years.
Hey, hang on Ted, Steve, any question?
Go ahead.
Yeah. On the third column over, you got twenty, twenty-one year-to-date expenses. Can you remind me, how many months is that roughly?
How, I'm sorry, you were a little muffled, Steve. What was the question?
Okay, uh, the third column going over to the left.
The year-to-date, yep.
Yep. Is that cover how many months? Ten, eleven?
Uh, that covers from, what is it, June first to, to now, basically, right? Right, Tim?
I think it's probably through, uh, February billing, so probably covers nine months of the year.
Yeah, until end of January, beginning of February, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Um, so, uh, let's see, where are we here? Same thing with apparatus maintenance. We have a new engine, and as, as our apparatus gets progressively newer, as we replace older equipment, we're able to, you know, reduce the budgeted maintenance for that particular vehicle. So right now, everything we have is at an age where the rescue truck is the only one that really needs to have any serious. That's the only one I have serious maintenance concerns on in the next year or two. That one's due for replacement in twenty-twenty-four. So that one's the highest, and the rest of all, I've been able to reduce all of them. Uh, so we went to thirteen thousand there instead of sixteen, I believe.
Yes, right, okay.
So I, I knocked three thousand dollars off of that one. I don't have any major new equipment expenditures to look at for the next year. We're gonna finish out this budget year as close to even as we can. I have some purchases for some cordless, cordless rechargeable power tools and some other equipment, and I have to order turnout gear before the end of the budget year. We have four new members, five new members of, four of whom I'd like to replace turnout gear for. Uh, so that'll be something in the nine thousand dollar range. Uh, if we have the money for the fifth one, that would be great. And so all I budgeted for next year was four sets of turnout gear, because those have to be replaced every ten years by NFPA recommendation. That's their standard. I go a bit beyond that, because we don't put the load on turnout gear, the, the wear and tear that a career department with a lot of fires would. So I, I do fudge that a little bit. I, I go more by the condition of the gear and, and, you know, how well it's been taken care of than the actual calendar age of it. So, um, but we are, I, we do need to continue to replace it. So I tried to budget for a few sets every year, so I'll put in for four for next year. My new equipment budget is nine thousand. That, that rolls into thirty-one oh, thirty-four one oh two, the top line item. I'm just looking to see what.
So Ted, did you want that changed to nine thousand?
What's that?
You wanted that equipment line item to be nine thousand?
Yes, with the caveat that there, that Nicole has rolled other things into that line item, so it's hard for me to keep track of. As an example, that five hundred eighty-two thousand eight ninety-one is the purchase of the new engine last year.
Right.
So that, it, it, when I, when something like that falls into the equipment line item, it's hard for me to keep track, to balance that out against my normal, you know, handheld power equipment budget requests, you know what I mean? So I.
Yeah, we can subtract that out for you if you want.
No, no, I mean, that, that's fine, and, and I see that they had twelve-two in there as a, as a bookmark for this coming year. Um, and like I say, it, I don't, I'm not looking, you know, to have that much in there for new equipment this year. So the nine thousand is fine as far as I'm concerned.
All right, so you, so you're agreeing we can change that twelve-two to nine thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when you're talking about the twelve-two, you're talking about the first line, right?
Yep, the, the top line, the fire equipment, yep. Fire, Firematic equipment budget. Uh, the other, the other line item that I've always had a, a problem with is the, see, I, I showed his insurance. And the I think the budget shows it as employee benefits. Yeah, okay, there we go. So that, uh, I was, I've been budgeting. So I had fifty-eight thousand in there for last year. And that, it shows against a expenditures of sixty-two, I believe. Is that, I, I can't see the top line anymore. That G column is up to year-to-date?
So the last column is the proposed, the previous column is the budget for this year, and the previous column before that is the actual year-to-date?
Right, so, so right now, um, okay, so we're sixty-two, two seventy-four out of sixty-six, okay?
Yeah.
So I, I had had fifty-eight thousand in that line item for the last several years, because I don't have a good reckoning of what we're spending on. I, I can, I can get ten flex without too much trouble. The workman's comp and the liability insurance, both come out of that line item according to my sheet. And those two are very, very hard for me to quantify, because I don't have any, I don't have a record of that. Nicole pulled some of that for me the other day, and when I explained to her what to look for, and, and she showed me how the village keeps track of it. I think we could do a better job of that going forward, so that's.
But so, let's go through that. So don't we have Sarah a specific number for workman's comp for the fire department?
Yes, we get, uh, we get something from the county.
Uh, could you, could turn up your volume, someone can't really hear. Would you say you get something?
Yes, we get, we get a paper from the county.
Okay, so do you know what that number is? Do we have number to put in there?
I have to see if I have one that's, that will be good for this budget.
Okay.
I have to check, yeah.
Now, let's find out what that number is, cause that, that is a fixed number from the county. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. Uh, the insurance also. Uh, that's the liability insurance, right?
Yes.
And so that's the number we're gonna get from Mary Liberatori, and she's told us we can assume three and a half percent higher than the, the current year number. So it looks to me like twenty-six thousand is a pretty good number, given, if I believe that twenty-four-eight. So let, let's just jack up whatever the number is, twenty-four-eight to, to plus three and a half percent. All right, so Karen's gonna do that. And while she's doing it, so Ted, fire employee benefits now, in there, that, that includes the cancer coverage?
Correct.
It includes the low sap?
That's, yeah, those are the only two out of that one that I'm aware of.
Okay, so that's where you get the twelve thousand?
Correct.
So twelve thousand sounds low. I thought the cancer insurance was like three thousand. I thought the low sap was about seventeen.
I don't think I had enough in that, in that line item for the last couple of years. Off, off the top of my head, I wanna say we've been over on that one.
Yeah, so, so could you go back and refresh the numbers? Cause I think, and let's just specify, the employee benefits is low sap plus plus, um, cancer insurance. And the unallocated insurance is really the liability insurance, right?
I believe so, yes. The workers' comp is a Duchess County, it shows up in the, in the the record, the village record in the, in the, the printouts is a bill from Duchess County.
Right.
The liability shows as Marshall Sterling.
That's right.
Which is basically vehicle insurance and liability insurance.
Okay, so therefore, um, whereas we showed as a budget sixty-six thousand for the current fiscal year, these numbers adding up to fifty-eight thousand, that's, that's light. So we're gonna go refresh, what's the, what's the twelve thousand? I think it's gonna be closer to like twenty, based on the numbers from last year.
Well, it's fifty-eight thousand, yeah.
And the workers' comp, Sarah's gonna get the actual number from Duchess County, and the insurance. We're gonna jack up where it was for this year, three and a half percent, based on Mary Liberatori's input, right, Karen? So Karen, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, good.
That's been difficult for us to do, because we don't, I don't know what Duchess County is gonna charge us for the workman's comp until that bill comes, and usually I don't see it.
Yeah, actually, Sarah gets a memo, and I think from Duchess County, so she'll confirm that number.
Okay. And that's purely based on number of employees, correct? Or is it based on total hours?
Karen, all right, Sarah, do you know?
Uh, it's a combination of both, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think it ends up being an actual memo from Duchess County that says, here's how much you're gonna put in for workman's comp, so.
Okay, and when, when does the village get that? That's the question. Do they get that in a ma, in a time of the year when we can use it for these calculations? Or does that not show up until later?
So I didn't get it till July of last year.
Right, and, and that's, that's the problem that I have every year.
Yeah, and I believe we did ask for it in a more timely manner, and they said they couldn't, they couldn't give it to us, and
Right, yeah.
Didn't matter what our fiscal year was.
Exactly, yeah, the village's fiscal year is, is responsible for a lot of these issues.
Yeah, it's different than theirs.
Right, no, and so we just kinda have to budget.
Well, but that's true for all villages. I mean, we're, we're on the same schedule as every village, so.
Right.
You're, you're correct.
Some things about that. Okay, we'll, we'll follow up and see what we can do as far as getting a better number there.
And then the only other, the, the other issue, line items that I have in my budget worksheet is the capital reserves. So we have, I believe, the village established an ambulance reserve last year, or the year before. But I don't know how much we put in that. And the apparatus reserve fund is supposed to be a sixty thousand dollar contribution annually, and I'm showing, I, based on what I was told, and we bought the new chief's truck in twenty nineteen, that's, I'm, I'm budgeting sixteen thousand for guest service on the, on the chief's vehicle. So those, those three items are the, are, are my figures for capital reserve, you know.
All right, so, so do you see this, this sheet that Karen's got on the screen there?
Yep.
So we've got the ten thousand for the ambulance.
Okay.
We've got the sixty thousand, which is in the contract with the town for the, uh, the next fire truck.
Okay.
We've got your pickup truck, the principal and the installment. That's the latest numbers, I think, that Sarah and Karen got from the bank.
So, uh, oh, okay, so there's two separate line items for that then?
Right, there's, there's a principal and there's the interest for your pickup truck.
Fourteen thousand, so it's actually fifteen thousand four hundred.
No, oh, oh, go, no, go to the final.
Oh, the final column, okay. So it's, okay, so twelve, five, twenty-five.
Yes, thirteen point five.
Okay. So that's thirteen.
All right, and then you wanna talk about the ambulance, or have Laurie talk to the ambulance numbers?
As far, oh, uh, she just texted me a minute ago and said she's having trouble with, uh,
Oh.
With her audio. Laurie, are you able to hear?
She was on, let me just see if she's muted. Can you unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There you go.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I got a phone to my ear and the iPad in front of me. This is silly. Um, well, with Ted, with what Ted just said, um, you can take the, what I had given to you guys, cause he's got, um, money for the CPR and first aid in his budget or line item. So that, I had put, given you a printout for thirteen thousand, so that takes a thousand off there. And I always put in a thousand for ambulance maintenance. Is that included in your?
No, I have.
Apparatus maintenance, Ted?
No, I have not included ambulance maintenance in with mine. I can if it makes heat gear for everybody, but I haven't up until now.
Okay, I was just wondering.
That falls in with what I, approximately what I budget for the newer, you know, smaller apparatus in the fireside, you know, about five hundred dollars per unit per year, so that's that's perfectly fine to keep that in there, you know, as long as you keep track of what you're spending.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Okay, um, so I had, um, the printout, the breakdown that I had sent to the village, um, for contractual, contractual expenses, I, you know, I had down eight thousand dollars um, for oxygen and EpiPens, the ambulance maintenance stretchers, um, stair chair maintenance, and also AED ma, service. Um, we have not had our AEDs checked in a long, long, long time. And, um, they are getting older, so I have a feeling that might be something we really need to look at this year.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, cause we certainly want those working. And, um, so we're taking, then my next line, I had put training, so we can take that out since Ted has it um, covered. And then the thing after that, I put equipment. Um, we have not purchased any gear in a number of years. Hopefully ours is all still good. Um, like Ted was saying, you know, the ten years, but I think it's been at least that that we've ordered. I have a thousand dollars down for that, and three thousand dollars for the EMR system, that's the electronic PCR. Which we, it's a fee we have to pay every year. So that's kind of short and simple for us.
Okay, uh, so why isn't the, so the EMR, you've got the EMR, this is just to maintain it, right?
Yes.
That's basically a subscription fee.
So does that belong there under equipment, or is it belonging up here under contractual, contractual expenses? Oh, I guess we've lumped everything for the ambulance under contractual expenses. That's fine, it's all one line item, okay.
Hey, Tim, it, it does look like it's all in contractual expenses.
All right, so then is, is twelve thousand the number?
Um, that's, yes.
Okay.
I mean, with COVID last year and, um, getting the EMS, EMR, excuse me, system, um, last year, it and the little confusion in the budgeting, um, I wasn't able to buy supplies and things because of ten thousand dollars came out, or almost ten thousand, basically from the budget for the EMR system. So, um, we do kinda need to kinda catch up on some of our supplies and, uh, with the CPR training and stuff, I just had to do an update. Um, I sent Ted an email. Um, I actually need to order about a thousand dollars worth of books, um, for new instructor books and participant books. So that right there will come out, can come out of, um, the current budget, but with the updates and things that are happening, it, it is costing us.
Okay, and by the way, Steve, I hope you support the, uh, you know, our philosophy here, which is that, you know, we have the twenty-four-seven paid service by NDP. But we still want the, the volunteers to be a viable, um, up-to-speed, fully-trained service. Um, you know, for at least backup capability, if not for when we have events and things like that, so I'm hoping that the town supports that effort.
Okay.
All right, good. And, uh, okay, Laurie, anything else on yours?
No, sir, thank you.
Thanks. Then the, uh, ambulance, the, the line below that, we're contractually obligated to, uh, kick up an additional two and a half percent per year with NDP. And so that's ninety-six hundred dollars, or about ten thousand, we're showing going from last year's budget three eighty-five to three ninety-five for this year. Okay? Actually, I, I'd suggest this, Karen, can, can you guys just look at the, the, the monthly payment we make to NDP and just at, you know, increase that by two and a half percent? Maybe there'll be something shy of the three ninety-five, because NDP is like clockwork. There's just no problems with these guys, either with the service or with the billing, so I think we can make it an accurate two and a half percent of whatever we're paying this year. Okay?
I was looking at that nine-month year-to-date.
Uh, Steve, say again, you're not, you're not coming through very clearly.
Okay, uh, I was looking at the year-to-date, three hundred and twenty thousand. And, uh, if it's nine months, you'd think we'll get to three ninety-five?
Yeah, let's just look. I'm going to an op, I'm going to the, um, whoops, let's see, there it is. I just looked at the, at the last operating report, it's at thirty-two thousand, we'll just do it right now. The monthly bill, the, the monthly bill is thirty-two thousand and thirty-one. Let me just
Okay.
Add that up by twelve. It's three eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, all right?
But, um, Tim, is it possible that June's, June's payment will be accrued if it's actually for May?
Say that again, Karen?
Is it possible that June's payment will be accrued if it's actually for, for the month of May? That's the, the only thing I'm thinking that, that there may be one payment that's accrued.
Um, what does accrued mean? Accrued means we would pay it this fiscal year, or we'll count it for next fiscal year?
That we would pay it, if it came in in June and it was for May, we'd pay it in next fiscal year and account it for this fiscal year.
Well, the June ninth payment is showing on this fiscal year, according to the expenditures.
Oh, okay, then it's not, okay, good.
As long as that carries over from year to year, and it, you know, we don't drop a month somewhere.
No, we'll do it the same way.
Okay, yeah, actually, I see that we've, wha, what are you showing as, as a year-to-date? Payment there. You're showing three, oh, three hundred and twenty thousand, right?
Three hundred and twenty, yeah.
And we have two more payments to do? So that's an additional sixty-four thousand, it's three hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Okay.
I think we're, we're right on there, and that says the budget for next year ought to be three hundred and ninety-four thousand. Three ninety-five is pretty close, but anyway. I think those numbers are good, all right?
Okay.
Just as a reminder, um, speaking of annual increases, the, I've been requesting for a number of years now to increase that, uh, equipment reserve from sixty thousand. Um, I know it's a sore subject, but at five years, you know, between apparatus replacements, we're running at three hundred thousand, and the cost of the equipment, as you saw in that top line item there, is running up into the five hundred thousand dollar range. So every year that we leave that where it is, the gap between the village's funding and the cost of the apparatus gets bigger and bigger.
So I, I've heard this before.
That's why he's laughing.
So, so you are consistent. I gotta, I gotta hand you that, Ted. Let me ask you this. What if we worked with the town on trying to increase the annual payment, and you worked on extending the time for replacement to six years instead of five?
We can look into that, yeah.
All right, we'll look into it on our end, how's that?
Okay.
And we'll meet again next year.
Well, the, the fire company has been filling that budget sheet all, you know, pretty reliably for the last twenty-five years.
Right, so Steve, you understand that, right, that, uh?
It may not continue forever, I don't.
I know. So Steve, the problem is, we put in sixty thousand a year, they replace the vehicle every five years. We therefore have three hundred thousand to give over, and, uh, they come in with the initial two hundred thousand, so requesting that we increase the annual, uh, reserve for the fire truck. All right? Uh, and you're on mute, or something, I can't hear you talking, but anyway. All right, so I'll take.
What, what are you gonna increase it to?
I'm gonna talk to you offline, we're gonna figure out what to do.
Okay.
And Ted's gonna go back and think about, can we do it longer than every five years? We'll see if we can come to a meeting in the mind, cause I agree with Ted, um, it's not appropriate. If we're really serious about this, then we gotta do it right. But let's not decide it. But let's not decide it here. Let's, um, take it offline, we'll come back next week with a discussion about it. And now let's go to my favorite topic, the cost of a new roof, Ted?
That's more Matthews-Balowick than mine, but he's sitting there salivating, so.
All right, Mike, go ahead.
Well, we've, we've been having trouble with the roof for the past, uh, I don't know how many years.
Six, seven years.
Um, every time we get a heavy rain, it leaks. I have, uh, construction guys come in to take a look at it. And this past year, it probably, I've had them look at it numerous times. And I said, you know, we better, uh, look into replacing the roof instead of just keep on patching it here, patching it there. The, the last time the roof was, was redone, I believe it was in the late nineteen nineties. Um, I believe ninety-six or ninety-seven, I can't remember back then. Um, and usually they're supposed to go thirty years, but unfortunately, this one hasn't made it to the thirty years. Um, we brought it up at the company meeting to, um, or I brought it up at the company meeting, what to do with it, uh, last year. And, um, they had the idea of going from wood, uh, roof to a metal roof. Uh, unfortunately, the price is very steep on the metal price, unlike a roof. Uh, it's very nasty. Um, so I had received a quote of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, we, for the metal, for the metal roof, for the, uh, standing seam metal roof. And I brought that to the fire department, uh, at, at the March meeting. And the fire department has agreed that we will split the cost of the roof for a metal roof this year. So that's why that high amount is in there.
Okay, so, um, generous offer by the firehouse, appreciate that. Um, the standing seam metal, that basically would be a lifetime roof, right?
Correct.
What is?
It certainly should outlast an asphalt roof.
Yeah, so, but let me ask you this, what is the cost of an asphalt? I just had an asphalt roof put on my house with a fifty-year warranty on it.
It's a little over, it's a little more than fifty percent of the, of the metal roof.
So it's like sixty grand?
Yeah, a little, yeah, between fifty and sixty.
Fifty and sixty?
Yep.
And what's the warranty on that for an asphalt roof that you got?
Uh, that would probably be thirty years. But remember, in thirty years, you're, that price of a wooden roof is not gonna be in the fifty, sixty range. It'd probably be close to, uh, eighty to ninety. But with a metal roof, that's a lifetime, lifetime roof.
The other issue that we've got with the roof here is that it's a fairly shallow pitch. Uh, so it tends not to shed snow as well as a steeper roof would. Uh, I think that's probably why we get more leakage issues. Um, the, uh, the standing seam metal roof is gonna, is gonna shed the snow load better and stand up to, uh, you know, the snow load better than an asphalt roof does.
And that's also two roof, I see your hand up, Steve, hang on, that's also two roofs. It's not just, you know, we got the fire department side and the rescue squad side.
Yeah, these are, they're two large areas. I mean, it's a significant amount of square footage to replace. That's, that's why they, you know, one of the reasons the cost is so high.
There, you're talking about doing the whole thing, right?
Correct, yep.
Steve, you got a question?
Yeah, uh, I didn't quite understand what you guys were talking about splitting the cost, Matt. What, what do you?
The fire company membership is offered to pay fifty percent of the final cost of the roof and split it to the village.
And, and this is only half of it, is what you're saying?
That's the full cost, the full cost of the roof. Uh, the quote that we received from a contractor was a hundred and ten thousand during that ballpark.
Okay.
Is the firehouse gonna, gonna cover half the cost of an asphalt roof, would we agree to go that way?
Yes.
Okay. So my tendency would be to say, let's put it off to next year because, and we can start saving this year and have, you know, half of it covered by next year. Unfortunately, I agree with Matt's assessment that the, the roof is leaking right now, right?
Correct, we have lots of buckets, but it's an inefficient way to do business.
Thankfully, it's a firehouse, so there's a lot, no shortage of buckets, but still, it's not, nobody to run a railroad. So, um.
See on the railroad comments, Tim. It's a little close to home.
Sorry about that. Okay, I'm just, um, having a hard time with the hundred, a thousand, even half of that, the fifty-five thousand for the, for this year's budget, given the other issues that we as a village have to deal with. Um, so I don't know, any other, any other comments from the board members about this, any opinions? Mike, go ahead.
Uh, I think in a situation like this, where we have a very large expenditure that we didn't anticipate, uh, I think banning it over a period of time might be a solution as opposed to, as opposed to, you know, putting it all on just this year in order to pay for it. Uh, you know, how we, even if we have to put it initially in this year's budget, go on a payment basis to be able to take a little bit at a time, especially since we're talking about a thirty-year roof. We certainly can be able to, uh, spread the, the damage over a longer period of time if we do a, some kind of a ban instead.
Uh, actually, I'm not interested in a ban so much as a bond or something like that. So Karen, what are our options there?
Um, we can look into it. I think we should do an assessment of our long-term debt and see what our, where we're at on our constitutional tax margin and see what our debt-to-income ratio is. But Sarah and I can go in and take a look at that. It's based on the last five-year average assessment and last five-year, um, tax levy, so. Hey, I mean, you can do that, and the rates are definitely good right now to be.
This would be more like a loan, is it a bond or is it a loan? I mean.
It's a bond, it's, you know, the village would do, the village would do a bond. Um, and then we would just get the, um, whatever the period of probable usefulness for the roof is, um, whatever New York State deems that, that a useful life, and then we can do it over that time.
Okay, um, I'm still hung up on the, on the doubling cost going to the, uh, the metal roof. So, but, but Ted, you're saying there's shallow portions of the roof that you're concerned about, that with a new roof even, that might be a concern, is it? Uh, what did you get as far as a quote for the asphalt work job? Was it done with a, with a warranty that looked at this kind of concern with?
That's checking, yes, in an email, it's gone.
Okay.
How many quotes do we usually get for something like this? Do we?
Well, this would require three, I believe, because of the, uh, amount of the expenditure. We, we were just looking for a ballpark figure for a budget estimate, so we just got a single, we had a single contractor take a look at it and give us a, a ballpark guess on both types.
Okay.
Yeah, our procurement process requires at least three, three.
Thank you.
Although I think if it's over thirty-five thousand, don't, we need to do a, um, formal bid?
I believe so, uh, because looking at the quotation form, five hundred to thirty-four nine ninety-nine is three written quotes. So after that, it would have.
Oh, good point.
You have to go out to formal bid.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we're just discussing now placeholder for the budget.
Uh, the price I had received for the asphalt is forty-nine thousand, two hundred. And again, that, that was just the ballpark, you know, I had it requested from contractor to give me, so I can put it in the budget.
Sure. All right, Steve, what do you think?
I got the idea, uh, you guys getting a bond, that, that seems to me to be a good idea. Um, that way we can pay for a little by little in each budget in the next thirty years. Um, but I, I think what you're saying is the, uh, metal roof would be the way you wanted to go, right?
Yes, that would be our recommendation.
I'm, I'm not there yet, but I guess I'd like to hear from Karen after they, she comes back with what, what her recommendation as far as how we would fund this thing.
Mm-hmm.
I understand the lifetime guarantee, that sounds very attractive. But for half the cost, I'm kind of stuck on the asphalt, I don't know.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Un- unless, unless you have, maybe you've got, uh, you know, the vendor says to you, Matt, that, uh, there's a risk from doing this. If it's a shallow roof, I don't want to do this thing and have, have there be a problem. So unless the, the asphalt guy can't guarantee us that that's gonna be a, whatever his lifetime warranty is, thirty, fifty years, whatever it is, um, that would, that would certainly sway my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike?
You think, you think these warranties are solid both ways?
The guarantees, you said?
The warranty or?
Warranty, yeah. I don't know, I mean, I, I just had my roof done, uh, two years ago. And it's, it's a fifty-year warranty, it's against certain, you know, wind damage up to a hundred and thirty miles an hour. You know, there, there's caveats, it's a limited warranty. You know, so that, that is what, what you take on, you're not gonna get a, you know, unlimited warranty.
Yeah, my, uh, my, my, my point of view on this is the fact that, uh, as Matt pointed out, we were supposed to get thirty years out of this last one, and, uh, we got less than that. But how many companies and how many situations do you have where you're gonna be able to go back twenty-five years later and say, uh, I want, I wanna, you know, get a, get reimbursed for what you guys said was gonna be a thirty-year roof? Good luck trying to find if they're still in business or try to get the company that gave the material. You know, you know, you know, it, to me, if it, if, if they, uh, if, if there were issues with the roof lasting thirty years and the, uh, and Matt, and Matt's who takes care of the building impeccably well, usually is saying along with Ted that there are low spots so that, that thirty year is kind of a misnomer. Uh, I would be leaning towards a metal roof, uh, for the ease of taking care of it and for the fact that it will do much better in the, in the snow. My son who lives in Colorado, uh, in, in a ski area right by a ski resort, you couldn't, you can't find a asphalt roof within, within fifty miles of the, of the resort. Nobody puts an asphalt roof there because they get two hundred inches of snow a year. So it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's a, I think it's probably a good investment based on everything, uh, comparing apples to apples.
Tim, you used the, uh, the, the wind, uh, the wind thing as an example when, you know, to guarantee that you got on your roof. Um, your roof has a twelve-on-twelve pitch, it's a lot steeper than the one on the firehouse, so it's much easier to guarantee a roof like that against, uh, you know, wind damage because the, there's less of a tendency for the wind to lift the shingles. Or roofs like, and particularly on the, the newer half of our building where the, where the ambulance bays are and the, the new room upstairs, um, that, that roof is a very shallow pitch. And so it's much, there's a much higher tendency for the wind to lift the shingles and for snow to stay on them and, and refreeze and, and lift the shingles as you get, you know, as it gets older and older. Um, you know, we figuring that this roof may well have had a thirty-year guarantee and we're, we're past twenty years, you know, creeping up on twenty-five here. I mean, I, it doesn't really owe us anything. It's, it has not held up all that badly considering, you know, the way the roof is configured and, and what we're working with.
Mm-hmm.
Matt, did the metal roof guy, did he make any comments about the steepness or lack thereof on the roof itself?
Steve, can you repeat that, you kind of cut out.
Okay, the metal guy, did he, uh, make any comments about, uh, the, the shallowness of the roof? And would he seem to think we might have leaking problems? Did he indicate any of that?
Well, well, the same guy that I got the, got the contra, or the, uh, quotes for is, I got him for the exact, for both, the metal and the wood.
From a single contractor.
From a single contractor, who's the contractor that's been up on that roof numerous times in the past two years fixing it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But what I, what I'm trying to, uh, avoid is having them go up on the metal roof to fix it. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I don't, he didn't specifically address the, the, uh, physical, uh, you know, the physical characteristics of the roof. I, he's familiar with the structure because he does a lot of our repairs here. And so, you know, it made sense to ask him for just a ballpark figure. Uh, no, we didn't specifically address those issues, uh, but those are pretty common, you know, uh, differences between asphalt and metal roofs and, and, you know, a shallow pitch is something that the, you know, most contractors would probably recommend a metal roof so that it doesn't, uh, become an issue or so that it lasts longer.
I will tell you something, uh, that we had going up at Cardinal Hayes because my office for a number of years was in, uh, a metal building up there. Uh, you can't, you can't tell when the snow's gonna come down, okay? And, uh, uh, when you go out the door and somebody slams the door and you're the next guy out, it can get, uh, it can get, uh, surprising, you know? And, uh, so I, I just want to tell you, you gotta watch the entrance ways and, uh, with the snow. And, uh, they gotta be, uh, cleaned a lot more than you might think. Um, the doorways themselves, because when you open, when you open and close them, uh, you can get, uh, surprised.
This is a caveat for the metal, for the?
Yeah, for metal roof, yep, that's correct. Yeah, we have, uh, awnings over top of all our entry doors now, uh, to help alleviate that a little bit. And plus on the, uh, on a typical metal roof installation, you'll, they'll put a, I forget what they're called. They're little, uh, teeth that go on the roof to keep the snow from sliding off without any impediment, uh, you know, and, and causing an injury or causing damage. So those, those are all things we can address, that's not hard to, uh, to work around. But again, it's, it's, you know, we would have to get a quotes from an actual roofing contractor and see where we went with that. And again, this is a GC that gave us the, uh, the quote. So, you know, and that, once we, if it goes out to bid and goes to roofing contractors, it's, you know, that, that figure may go up and may go down. You know, if they have better access to materials, if they have more familiarity with the, with the standing seam roof, uh, you know, that, that figure may, may change. It's just a ballpark, so we knew approximately what we were getting into.
All right, so, so you're asking us to, um, add in, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars for the metal roof, for our portion of the metal roof, or thirty thousand for the asphalt? But you, but you want us to assess the fifty-five thousand, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so Karen, you're gonna go back and talk to, find out what we can do as far as financing of that kind of a deal?
Yeah, are you, you're looking to, um, bond fifty-five, you're looking to bond half of it, or are you?
No, so, so we're looking to bond, uh, I guess the fifty-five thousand, which would be the village slash towns' he- half of the total cost. Because the firehouse is gonna take care of the other fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
Now, that's the proposal.
Okay.
So, so let's, so let me ask you this then, Karen, what then is the total request? If you put in fifty-five thousand instead of the hundred and ten thousand, and all the discussions we had here, what is now the total request for fire and rescue versus what it was, uh, in the current?
So, uh, we're keeping the fourteen thousand, two hundred, correct?
That is correct. I think I actually, I think I actually put a hundred thousand into that line item just as a placeholder when I sent it in.
So if I reduce that, then we, we got sixty-nine, two? Right?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
And fifty-five, yep.
So, um, yeah, we reduced the equipment to nine thousand.
Karen, wouldn't that be fifty-nine, two?
I think he wants to keep the fourteen thousand, two hundred in there, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so Steve, it's fourteen thousand, two hundred for other repairs and maintenance, and then fifty-five thousand for the?
Right.
All right? For the roof, okay? Okay. So what does that give us as a total for the fire and rescue?
Seven twenty nine eight seventy five.
And what was it last year?
It looks like it was six eighty seven three hundred.
Look at that. So.
Forty two thousand five seventy five more than last year. So basically, the cost of the roof.
That's a six percent increase. Year to year.
And quick question concerning would this be considered a capital improvement, like a capital project? Because I thought capital projects wouldn't necessarily be a factor when you're dealing with the tax cap. In other words, that can be a separate category. If you're taking out a long term bond and you're using something like this, does that apply?
Mike, that is only where they only do that for school districts, villages. And towns cannot take out our capital expenses for the tax cap. They are they are part of it.
Okay, all right. I thought that was something we were allowed to do, but that.
Yeah.
Good question, Mike.
Yeah, no, school districts, school districts are allowed to do it, but municipalities cannot do it.
Okay.
But the but I guess if we did, I mean, that sixty nine two, if we if we bonded it would go back down to the fourteen two. So I think we should look at all of our long term debt, though, and see where we're at in terms of payments and how far we're going out with them.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of it to bond in the first place instead of having a, you know, a huge number in the budget increase this year that we could try to dull the pain a little bit by by kind of drawing it out over period of years. And that was the point of my question in the first place. But we'll have to look at it and see which makes the most sense. If we want to do it all at once, that's fine. And that would just be the explanation to the taxpayers of why it is what it is, because you can't let the roof go a number of years waiting to try to stay within a financial constraint just for the sake of, you know, for the sake of the financial constraint.
Yeah, that's why I'm not just rejecting this outright, because the roof the roof is leaking like now. It's not like it's not like we're thinking in five years, we need to replace this roof. It's the fact is right now we're incurred damage of unknown amount by not fixing the roof. So.
To be honest, I don't understand why the village doesn't have a, you know, a reserve for that, like you've got five buildings. How does the village not have? You know, put a couple thousand dollars aside every year. When you what happens when you have to replace the roof on the village hall? Same thing.
Right.
Yeah, well, we only we only started putting reserves on different items in the last three, four years with.
Yeah, that's incomprehensible to me. I don't it's, I don't know.
No, I I don't. I think it's a valid criticism.
Has a building fund. That's what that's how they pay for you. Whatever.
Yeah, we are. We are starting to get that mentality in place. We're starting now. I mean, in the water and sewer fund, we just started putting reserves in place for those things, which we didn't have before. So valid point. We'll see what we can do. And we're not there yet. So we'll take that as as appropriate criticism. Okay, so any more questions? I guess that kind of wraps up the discussion at this point for the fire and rescue. As far as work items. Steve, we're going to go and talk about what we should be doing as far as increasing the annual reserve for the next fire truck from sixty thousand dollars to some some higher number. Ted's going to go look at how long he can put off the purchase of the next fire truck. And Karen, you're going to go look and see what we can do as far as funding the cost to replace this roof. Have we decided yet? We're going to we're going to go with the steel roof versus the asphalt? You know, are we in agreement that the recommendation from the firehouse is to go steel?
That's our recommendation. That's our recommendation.
I know that's your recommendation. Does the board agree? And Steve, do you agree? Mike?
I think I think we should really look, take a hard look at it. I think Karen might be able to help us with the decision, but I think you gotta look at it. It makes sense what you're saying about the fact that
Whenever you move to your right, Steve, we lose your mic. Say that again.
Okay, I was looking at my spreadsheet there. I I I understand exactly what you're saying about the the pitch and the asphalt. And so therefore, I'm I'm thinking it does make sense to talk about a metal roof. But again, I think maybe Karen might be able to help us by doing some research and we can finalize that decision when we find out whether we can bond it or whatever. And whether you guys are comfortable with that.
Okay. Vicki or Buffy, any comments from your end?
Go ahead, Buffy. No. You know, my only concern is it's like, why? Why did the fail that's on it now? If it's still, you know, it's under a thirty year warranty, what's going on besides the pitch? Is it faulty material, something like that? Have we looked into that? I mean,
Unfortunately, having just gone through the experience, a lot of times they can't tell you until they actually take off the old roof, which will be like step number one.
Okay.
All right. And then they'll find out, for example, that the plywood is damaged. They have to replace plywood too or whatever.
Okay.
All right. You know, finding out why it is probably won't be clear to us until they actually start taking, you know, doing the demo.
Right, okay.
My one and
I think I agree with what Steve says. It'll be easier to assess the differences in costs once we figure out what our annual payments might be on any bonds that Karen can locate to fund this. So.
Okay, Karen, you're saying?
Um. Is it possible that you you might need an engineer just to maybe have somebody? I don't know, check the load bearing and just just have like have somebody kind of sign take responsibility for for if there was damage or something underneath the roof itself? I don't know.
Keep cutting out.
I was just saying, do you think you might want to have an engineer involved in writing the spec for it instead of just doing a replacement? Just in case there is something. I think it's as Vicky said, that's maybe underneath the roof that needs to be addressed.
I think with if the building was older or had other structural problems, I would say that would might be a good idea. This this building, the one half of it was built in nineteen sixty five and the other half in nineteen eighty seven. So, you know, they're both structurally in very good condition. I I really think it's just a, you know, a membrane issue, structure, roof structure issue. But I was just talking on the side with Matt and we were both here when it was replaced last. We can't remember the name of the contractor that did it, but we're pretty sure that it went out to bid. And it was a local company out of Red Hook, we we think. We're not a hundred percent sure. But, you know, it was a low bid kind of project through the that the village paid for that time, too, that that's something that Sarah might be able to pull a record for that because Matt doesn't think we have it here. But if there's any recourse, we would have to see if that outfit is still in business or to what degree you know, they they would come back and look at a warranty item from twenty five years ago. I don't know. But again, I think it's just a roof surface issue. And and the problems arising from the the way the building is constructed. Not there's anything structurally wrong with it. It's just the the way the roof is pitched and the way that the two halves of the building come together. It's, you know, it's just a few spots and it's hard to seal.
All right. Well, I assume as you go through the process of getting at least three quotes that you'll have enough expertise looking at the the roof and telling you what what the issues are that need to be addressed, right?
Oh, yeah, the wall, whoever, like Karen said, I believe this is going to have to go out to bid because of the scope of the project.
Right.
So it's, you know, the interested bidders would have to come and do a hands on assessment of it. Including, you know, getting into the crawl spaces and looking at the underside of the, you know, the roof membrane itself, the roof structure itself.
Mike, you were going to say something?
I just that just that, you know, in terms of taking any votes tonight, if you want to ask people preferences, you can, but I think we should probably count on spending the higher amount only because that'll make it easier to prepare for budget wise. And when when we finally get the research done on how we're going to finance it, we can make the final decision down the road in a few weeks. But I think that's probably the way to go instead of saying metal asphalt and making that decision right.
I'll just recommend that very same thing. I think that we should put in the budget, the fifty five thousand now. But no way in hell does he get any additional in the reserve for the fire truck. Oh, yeah. So so that's why I won the ten thousand discussion and lost the fifty five thousand. Oh, yeah.
You're going to penalize me because I keep my fire trucks in better shape than Matt keeps his roof? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And you're saying ouch, right? Tell me about it. So Steve, are you okay with that? A plan for the for the time being, Steve?
Uh, yeah, I that's
Okay, good. So let's go that way. Karen will then do some assessment for us in terms of how we could fund this thing. And we'll try to close the plan with that additional item in there.
So nothing is written in stone yet, right?
No.
On this.
The only thing that's in stone is that the is that the roof is actively leaking.
Okay.
Which is why it's it's a serious issue we need to get resolved.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
We have the wet mop upstairs to prove it. In numerous spots, not just the one spot. So we only have enough garbage cans. Yeah, we have. We're going to have to budget for a new roof or more garbage bags, one or the other. Now, I know you can buy a lot of garbage piles for fifty five thousand dollars, but still.
What about umbrellas?
Short term solution.
All right. Any other comments? Any other legitimate comments about the budget? Okay, if not, then I'm going to close the discussion for fire and rescue. And we're going to wait for Karen to come back to us in terms of funding, but that's where we're going to leave it for right now. Okay?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Let's move on to highway. So Steve, you're welcome to attend to stay on if you want to. We're going to go over to highway with Bob Colacola.
Sure, I I've just stay on for information's sake. That's all.
Okay, Bob. So Bob elected the same thing we just did with Matt and Ted and Laurie, which is just take us through line by line of any significant changes from year to year. I know you've been changing some categories, so you have to help us with that, just to bridge from the current budget, which is the second last column to the proposed budget, which is the last column.
I think he's still on mute.
Where's he at?
I see a red microphone. So I think he's
Bob Colacola.
Okay. My my goal with this budget is to be able to keep a running tally of expenses, which in the past we haven't been able to do because everything has been lumped into so many different large categories. So I haven't really been able to check where we are going along. Now, speaking to Nicole, she can break it down even further for me so that I can see month to month what I have left because it's such a all these categories are so volatile because we don't know a lot of the unexpected problems that could come up for maintenance, for snow, to just about every category, you can't pin down knowing what the number is going to be. So instead of lumping it all together, we we kind of broke it down as best we could. And she said that we could even break it down further for at least so that I could see what we were expanding, especially things like, for example, like tree, tree maintenance. That's that's something I have to I want to keep track of so that I know what where when I'm approaching the limit of taking down more trees or removing stumps or whatever.
All right. It sounds like the discussion that we just had with Ted and Matt, which is that there's there's detail behind this, these line items here that that you're going to keep track of. That's fine.
I'm unfortunately, I'm on a telephone, so I I can read it, but, you know, give me a just give me a second when checking certain things. I'm using my sheet that she gave me.
That's fine.
An example of well, let's go line by line. And when I get to it, we'll we'll go over an example of things that were lumped together.
Just tell us when you go through line by line, just tell us what is in those categories. All right.
All right, great. Okay, the first line where you see four thousand last year, three thousand this year budgeted. Excuse me. That's again, an unexpected type of thing of something, if we need a new chainsaw, if we need a pressure washer, something like that goes down. Small tools that that are inside the garage. I put that in in case something needs to be replaced. So that's not something where we're we're going to spend three thousand dollars. It's there as a cushion in case we need to.
Odds and ends kind of stuff. Okay.
Yeah. The next category, as you see, the twelve thousand, I had her break that down. The twenty three hundred. That is for the Verizon phone. WB Mason Water Delivery and and the garbage removal, things that I really can't control too much. And then utilities, of course, are what they are. We didn't raise them. I lowered the gasoline a few hundred dollars because, as you can see, we really never hit that. We don't use very much gasoline. So I lowered that to six hundred from eight hundred. Heating fuel, again, it was down. It's down this year a little bit, but it's that's a volatile commodity also. All right, repairs and maintenance. When I asked last year, I asked to have that budgeted at twelve thousand dollars. It was budgeted at six. What I found out was the repairs and maintenance that I had asked for was for the trucks. This that number you see there seventeen seven eighty five was including building maintenance. So it just blew that right out of the water because we did have that repair on the side of the building. The siding blew off from the really bad storm. That got lumped into there. So that put me way over on repair maintenance. And of course, some of the we were dealing with an older truck also.
I don't know. Wait a minute. Wasn't insurance coverage for that damage to the garage?
It covered some of it. But at the same point, we also did repairs on the we finished the whole garage. One one side was one side was insurance. The other side we we got rid of the old siding and while we were doing it, we put the new siding on that side.
Well, let me just ask Karen and Sarah. So if he spent, I don't know, ten thousand dollars to repair the garage because of weather damage, we got eight thousand dollars back from the insurance company. Do we still show ten thousand as an expense line or do we reduce as expense line to two thousand?
It would either be in the insurance recoveries or it would have been a expense reimbursement for this line. So I could go back and check and see where that insurance. Did that come in in this fiscal year? After?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take a look and see where that insurance recovery came from.
Okay, fine. Because we should credit that back somehow or another so that
And that was for what, I'm sorry, that was for what?
That was for siding on the side of the garage, the village garage, the main garage.
Okay, we'll make sure that's reflected in there when we find it.
Okay, so what I did was I I budgeted for six thousand dollars. Okay. So what I did was I, I budgeted for six thousand dollars. Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna spend that money. Um, I have no maintenance coming up on a building. We have a new roof, we have new windows, all the doors are new. Um, the siding, gutters, everything has been done over the last, uh, four or five years, so I'm not expecting any type of maintenance, but, um, and you guys correct me if you, if you want, I'm just thinking that if an oil burner, if the oil burner decides to quit, if something else like that happens, we have that, uh, money in there. Um, I don't know if that's the right way to think about it, but that's how I was thinking about it. That can go down, uh, as far as I'm concerned, down to two thousand, but if something comes up, then we have to find that money somewhere else.
But so this covers repairs and maintenance on buildings?
On the building.
On buildings, oh, okay.
Yeah. And like I said.
Not trucks?
No, that's not truck.
Okay.
All right, so again, I'm, I'm not expecting any type of maintenance at all this year, but like I said, if, um, if the oil burner decides to go or if a tree falls on the building, you know, I know that's insurance, but the oil burner really isn't something like that. Um, but we can drop that way down.
Comfortable with four, Bob?
Yeah, uh, four, four would be good. You could go to two, really, cause like I said, there's really not a lot that's gonna be done to that building. That was, I just put in there as an emergency repair.
Okay, so why don't we just put two in for the, I mean, what, what are you gonna put in? Just two? Yeah, okay, fine.
That would be fine. I mean, that would cover a broken window or.
Okay, sure. That, that's.
You know, whatever, something like that, but.
Yeah.
Any big expenditures are done. You know, like I said, the roof, the gutter, everything is, is, uh, yeah, and including the older buildings. You know, the jailhouse, things like that. Uh, okay. Now, supplies, um, we broke those down, uh, well, I broke them down into two categories. Uh, you don't see them, but, um, six thousand dollars for garage assets, uh, things like, uh, copy machine, um, the paper, uh, toilet papers, things like that. Um, I'm sorry, no, not, not things like that, just the opposite, I'm sorry. The replenishables uh, at twelve thousand are for things that we use that we, we're not keeping, nuts and bolts, uh, oil, um, all that type of thing. Cleaning supplies, uh, grease, all that that comes under that category. The garage assets would be like a copy machine, um, small hand tools, things like that.
You have a copy machine out there?
Uh, yeah.
It's, it's just a regular printer? I'm just a regular printer.
It's a printer, phone, text, uh, it's everything. It's our phone system, basically. But it also has a, uh, a way, way to make copies and send texts.
Okay. Do you use something like that very much?
Use it all the time, yeah.
Really? Okay.
It's our phone. Yeah, we, it's, it's.
Is that purchased or rented, or leased?
That's purchased. Yeah.
Okay, so it's there. All right, fine.
Yeah, we've had that for a long time.
But in general, eight, eighteen thousand seems like a lot for those kinds of supplies. Like, what, what are you spending this year on supply, on those kind of categories?
Well, I dropped it down from what we spent, and it was hard to, again, it was very hard to do because we have so many different suppliers um, to go down item for item, the hundreds and hundreds of, of purchases. Um, so it was kind of, it was kind of hard to break down, and Nicole quite honestly didn't have, uh, account of it, but I, I tried to add it up the best I could, and I came out with just about, uh, nineteen or twenty. So I, um, I dropped it down, uh.
So, so I guess I'm, I'm really surprised. So when you listed garage assets and replenishables, supplies, that just still seems like, like, am I missing something? What is, what's the big category I'm missing here of things that go in there?
I say, I think when, I think when you look at it, you're talking about if you, uh, if you look carefully at the invoices that I know I've been signing from Wearden Briggs and from, uh, from the companies that he orders for out of the catalog from and things like that, we're talking everything from nuts and bolts to, uh, to gloves, to, uh, to outerwear, to helmets, to, I mean, just all of those things would fall under the same thing of supplies because they're not meant to go more than a year or, you know, in that category. They're not long-term items like a snow blower or, uh, you know, a fan or something else like that. So
Yeah.
He, he's, in order to do the maintenance on the machines and on the trucks and weld things and do the kind of work they do, they're gonna have more in supplies than they will in, in other aspects. So I don't think that was at a line based on the invoices I've been signing all year.
Yeah, there's so many different, um, acetylene for the acetylene tanks, for the torches, for the welders, chainsaw, uh, chainsaw blades, uh, chains, um, anything like that. You know, that adds up cones, uh, anything that's inside the garage that is not a, not cones, but anything that's inside the garage that, that isn't a, a fixed thing, something that won't last forever or last for years.
Hmm.
I would consider replenishable, right down to toilet paper and paper towels and, um, all this stuff for COVID, that's all in, in the garage.
Yeah, okay. Um, but again, you don't have a number of what, what you spent year-to-date for all those kinds of things. You, we can't get that?
I can, I can get that for you, yeah.
I would, I'd like to just see how far off that is. It just seems like a lot of toilet paper to me.
Well, it's like I said, you buy, buy a, a gallon of some of the cleaners that we use and things like that. A, a gallon of, of cleaners, four hundred dollars. I mean, there's stuff that, yeah, the prices are are sometimes outrageous, but they're there. Batteries, you know.
Bob, can I just ask you a question? Um, why, why you decided, um, to just put it in supplies instead of just the point four that's where you put the twenty-three hundred? It looks like that's where it was with all of that before. Um, like if you were the eighteen, where you separated out supplies, because what you're describing is pretty much the contractual expense line, the very first one, which is the contractual expense line item. I'm just asking why you, um.
Well, Nicole and I, uh, looked it over and it's really not a, you know, a contractual expense. Uh, I don't consider it something that we, you know, we have a contract with a, with a company.
Well, this, well, that's not, I mean, the whole, the whole department here is contractual expenses, but um, that's fine. I mean, it's fine. We can make a separate line item, um, for it, but you can also pull these, pull your, um, pull your vouchers and invoices by like Verizon or by the different company and see, you know, if you don't want to do it just by the, the line item here, but we can separate.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
All right, we can separate it out.
Okay.
Oh, but Bob, the, uh, so repairs and maintenance line, line and right above there that you got, we put in two thousand, you spent seventeen, almost eighteen thousand year-to-date, but that's, that's got building maintenance in there. Right?
Right, that's building maintenance and the trucks.
Oh, and the trucks, that's right. Okay, yeah.
He put them, he put them all together for some reason, and I had asked for twelve thousand just for the trucks. He gave me, puts, he gave it, uh, six thousand and, and we put building maintenance in there.
Okay, so that's last year. So now, now you've got the twelve thousand is actually further on down, I see now. Okay.
Yeah.
So basically, you, you pulled out the vehicle maintenance from that line item.
Exactly.
Okay, from the sixteen forty point four.
Cause that's really not central garage, that's streets, uh, as far as I'm, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
All right.
Okay, uh, I will get, I'll go get a list of, I'll get, try and break those invoices down uh, as best I can to show you what the.
And actually, I, I'm more interested in just what the categories are that, uh, that, that are in there, not, not the number so much as just, you know, what else is, what all is in there.
Okay, yeah, that's what I mean. I'll get you.
All right, thanks.
More specifics. All right, um, the, the mowing, um, I brought that down to sixty-five hundred. Uh, I believe we're not gonna be doing the thorn building, uh, any longer.
Right.
And, and I'm also going to speak to, uh, the fellow who's doing it, and, and we're gonna, um, cut down on how many times, we're gonna do it more on a need-to basis.
Okay. Now, what mowing, what mowing is that?
That's the mowing of the, uh, um, sewer plant, the water plant, uh, village hall.
Village hall.
And the tennis courts.
Oh, okay.
All right, uh, fire, the firehouse and village garage, we, we mow and trim.
All right.
Uh, next line down, you see for the line of fifty-five hundred?
Yep.
That's, um, I'd like to put that on my wish list for, uh, a new plow for the, uh, to replace the two thousand eleven plow. We've had to do extensive repairs on it and we've been welding it now for the cracks, so, um, it's given us ten years and I, I'd kind of like to, uh, get that replaced.
And that is, that's one of the plows you've got? This is the one that goes on? Okay.
Yeah, the other two were, are, you know, they, they came along with each truck, so we have a, a one that's two years old, another one that's six years old. This one is eleven now, so, um, and with the repairs we're doing to it, we have to weld some of the cracks and I'm not real happy with.
So, so it's not the hydraulics that fail, it's actually the, the metal itself?
Yeah, the, the plow is pretty much, I mean, we've replaced a lot of the hydraulics. We, we have to replace them this year. Um, but that, that happens, that can happen to a brand-new plow.
Okay.
A hose can break, but the, the, the cracks and things like that, the bends, uh, it'll never be straight again, and that's, that's what causes it. Okay, road paving. Um, I kept it basically at the same, uh, a little bit less than last year. Uh, we're anticipating, as we spoke, we're anticipating paving Bennett Commons and X more.
Hmm.
Uh, with a full paved job, not, you know, not just us doing it, we're gonna have it done by a company. Um, we have enough chips uh, that will cover, we spoke about this, the chips would cover just about, um, I guess, three quarters of, of what we're gonna be paying, and the rest can come out of that budget and still leave us, uh, with quite a bit to do our dragboxing and, uh, patch hole, uh, pothole pave.
That, uh, five-one, one-oh-four line? Twenty-eight-five?
No, that's, um.
Wait, wait, you, you jumped down there one. No, that, we're above there. Right? So let, let me understand how this, how the, uh, the chips works, Karen. So we've got a chips fund of how much now?
Thirty-four thousand, I believe.
No, it should be forty-eight.
The, the balance is forty-eight, but I believe in April you'll get your next, um, allotment from the state, right, Bob?
Yes. So in April, we'll have more.
So it'll be about eighty, would you, about eighty?
Yes, and we can spend, um, a percentage of that, but.
Right.
More than enough to cover.
All right, so, 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 so the deal is, you think we're gonna end up with about eighty, you show that on your budget eighty-two. The state is reimbursing eighty percent still of what we request, right?
Yes.
I think they may be, I think, I think as we go on that they may be opening that up, but I don't know.
Okay, all right, fine.
And the cost of the, um, the cost of the road is going to be sixty, sixty-five thousand. So we should be well within what we need.
Okay, so basically, the sixty-five K, if we've got eighty-two K for chips and it's gonna cost us sixty-five K and the state's gonna go back and reimburse a hundred percent, then why isn't the whole thirty thousand to be other stuff, like patching and repair?
Well, that's, yeah, that, we, we can do that, absolutely.
Does that make sense, Karen?
Um, yeah, if the chips will cover it, if, Bob, if you think that the chips will cover what your plan to do this year.
It should, and, and if it's a hundred percent, it'll really cover it, but I was working with the eighty percent.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It, it very well could be eighty. They've been going back and forth of whether they're gonna reimburse that a hundred percent.
Okay, so if it's only eighty percent, that means of the sixty-five K, we'd have to put, put, put out six, thirteen K of it, right?
Um.
Twenty percent of sixty-five K?
Well, it, it means of the eighty that we'll have, we can only use, um.
No, I'm saying, no, I'm saying for, for doing X more and Bennett Commons, you said it's gonna cost sixty-five thousand.
Right.
If, we're gonna apply it all, request all from the state, if they only reimburse eighty percent, that means we have to fork over thirteen thousand.
Right.
Right? And so what's the rest of thirty thousand minus thirteen thousand then on the road paving line?
Well, I want to, I want to, we usually use between twelve and fifteen thousand on dragboxing.
Okay, all right.
And then the, uh, also, um, using, uh, the rest of it for, uh, patch, the pothole patching, that type of thing, anything that has to do with, with the roads. Um, any type, type of maintenance, uh, you know, blacktop maintenance.
All right.
Would be in there. Now, again, it can, we can drop that a little bit, but it's steady, it's been a steady thirty thousand, so I thought we could keep it there.
Well, thirty thousand makes sense if we have to fork over thirteen thousand of our piece of what's not reimbursed by chips and you recommend, you see about a fifteen thousand dollar additional for dragbox work elsewhere.
Yeah.
All right, that's fine.
That's what we've done in the past and it, it, it's a real nice, you know, stopgap and.
Yeah, sure. Okay, good. Go ahead.
Okay, um.
Yeah, quick question. Where do, where do sidewalk repairs with, uh, precision fit in? Do they, any place with the, it's under streets, is that under maintenance, uh, you know, repair maintenance or whatever?
That's, that's a line that I wanted to put in. That's under the twenty-eight-five?
Okay.
Okay.
The next line?
I, I broke that down and Nicole said we really couldn't add these as lines, but I just want to be able to see what I'm spending because this is another type of thing where if I have money, okay, let's do some more trees, let's do, you know. So I have the, the tree removal and stump removal under that category. And I was thinking, just to give you guys an idea, I was thinking about seventeen thousand for, for trees. Uh, infrastructure would be in there, which I was considering work on sidewalks, uh, catch basin, re- um, replacement, uh, catch basin grate, replace, any of that type of thing. Any, uh, piping that has to go underneath, any of those, those repairs or replacements, I consider infrastructure. And I set aside, uh, five thousand for that. And then last in that category is, uh, easy street with the street cleaning, uh, painting of the lines, um, and, uh, cleaning out of the catch basins. And I figured that to be, well, forty-five hundred.
And that's with three visits for them coming in the course of the year at fifteen hundred dollars a visit, essentially.
Exactly, yeah. And that's based on their, um, based on their, uh, their price, so uh, they said it wasn't going up this year, but we'll see.
Okay.
All right, um, next is, uh, well, diesel fuel training, that's, we have no control over that. Um, vehicle repair and maintenance. Now, I put in for, this is, vehicle is strictly the trucks and the backhoe. That's, under that, I put repairs and regular service, the oil changes, inspections, that type of thing. I put ten, she, for some reason, she put twelve thousand. I think she might have lumped something else in there.
Is there money, money in there for the snow, snow plow potentially?
That's a different category.
Okay, all right.
We took that out of there, and Nicole said we were putting that, uh, underneath the snow removal.
All right, that's fine.
Uh, maintenance on plows and sanders. Uh maintenance on plows and sanders are gonna go because then they're they're not really part of the vehicle, part of the truck, it's a a separate thing. Um so when we get down there, uh I also put um under repairs and maintenance, the the one below vehicle repair, I put, I put that for things like um repairing a uh the the saw that we use to to cut, you know, things like that, that that we use on the road. Uh any type of maintenance on small engines. That's anticipatory.
Okay, sure. Now, by the way, we, Bob, will you clarify, will you clarify with Nicole, you said that you put in ten thousand for vehicle repair and maintenance? Do you think she's got something else in there?
Yeah, I think she might have put something else in there.
All right, can you just check with her and clear that?
I'll check with her. And then under supplies, um under that category, again, if we need to to buy something, you know, for for repair on on uh again, some of the the of the saws and things like that, I put that in there. And again, that's just anti- that's it's it might not be anything. Uh hopefully, nothing breaks. Um we we have our trucks now. We just got uh the the brand new truck. One of the the money pits for repairs was that nineteen ninety two top kick. Um so that's gone away, plus we have the warranty on the new truck, so there there's no maintenance on that. Uh gonna be very little maintenance other than um oil cha- you know, servicing on the uh two thousand nineteen truck. Uh the two thousand eleven and the two thousand fifteen, those are the ones that tend to uh eat up money because front ends are, you know, start to go, that was two of the major repairs were on those trucks last year were front end work and those, that's in the thousands of dollars.
Well, I'm I'm just not clear, I'm not clear what what the distinction is between the supplies up there for the central gar- garage and the supplies down here for the streets.
Well, if those, the the supplies for the streets or anything, the equipment that we use outside of um of the garage, things like, you know, we have uh, we have the the road cutting saw, um any types of uh replacing any type of stuff, things on the uh leaf machine, the leaf box, uh any of that uh type of things that we do to maintenance on it, you know. So I didn't wanna put that in central garage.
All right.
Okay, um, snow removal. The first category is the personal services, that's not working on the on the sidewalks. I dropped that a little bit, um because we still haven't, uh I don't know if you guys, when you make a decision on what we're going to do with the um Kubota tractor. Uh if we're gonna go, if we purchase it and are we gonna purchase it with the ice uh melting tank or without? Uh if if it's without, that's going to save us money in in calcium and in manpower. So that's, that would.
All right, so um, you don't have that listed in your list of things that you wanna put in the budget, right?
Uh no, I did not, I didn't put that in.
Okay, let me just uh discuss with the board, what I was thinking of is, um obviously, the plow is in, it's well past its lifetime. Um it's twenty four thousand dollars to replace it, Bob, roughly?
Uh to replace the the tractor by itself would be twenty three thousand two twenty. If we add the uh tank system for spreading the calcium on the sidewalks, uh that brings it to twenty five one fifteen.
So what I wanna recommend to the board is this, what if we wait to see if we get the money released from the trust funds and apply that portion of it to replace the tractor when we get it?
I have no problem with that.
Vicky Buffy, comments? The idea is that we're petitioning Attorney General's office for them to release those funds worth forty three thousand dollars, of which twenty five hundred, we have to do something with Christmas tree decorations, but the rest of it, we ought to be able to use for general purposes. And I'm recommending that we use twenty three thousand of it to replace the uh sidewalk plow.
Unfortunately, the tractor will not make another year in my opinion. And if it does, we're just gonna be pouring all kinds of money into it.
Now, you told me that last year.
Yeah, and we poured all kinds of money into it this year. Um it's twelve, it's ten years old now, or eleven years old, whatever it is.
So anyway, that's what I want the the board to consider, such that I like to not put it in this budget. And if we do get the money from the uh trust funds released within the next six, three to six months, then we would have Bob come forward with a proposed, you know, uh quote. Is the board okay with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Vicky Buffy?
Um, yeah, I mean, I would entertain that.
Okay.
I mean, I think I I need to think on it a little bit, you know, after we see all the other budgets and what's out there and so forth, but yeah.
Okay, Vicky?
Yeah, I had originally helped, we could use the funds for some uh upgrades in the business district, so I too would like to wait to till we do all the budgets and figure out if that's gonna be necessary.
Okay, well, I think this is in the category similar to the roof leaking in the firehouse that it's necessary, it's just a matter of, you know, how are we gonna fund it?
Oh, yeah, I I I agree, it's completely necessary, it's just how we're gonna fund it.
Yeah.
I didn't believe Bob till he actually showed me what what the tractor looks like and uh he he converted me.
So, Bob, do you have it in here right now?
I don't, I don't.
Okay, good, all right.
And my proposal is we don't put it in here and we uh have the discussion once we see the money come forward.
And then you also do wanna discuss whether you wanna put that calcium tank on it.
Yeah, right, I'm I'm against that just because I'm sick and tired of my grass getting burned on the edge of the sidewalks every spring, so that's my personal preference.
The the biggest negative to toward it is that the reason the the um there's so much maintenance on the tractor is because of the uh salt erosion of the of the parts and hoses and things like that. Um that stuff sprays right back up onto the chassis and anybody who knows Matt knows that he is meticulous in in trying to keep that thing going. He's been out in the middle of snowstorms fixing it and things like that, so uh it's well maintained uh and it goes in for its regular servicing, so um that's a decision you guys would have to make it as far as the sidewalks go.
All right, so I'd like to keep it out of the budget for this time, let's go forward then, uh Bob, let's go to chips. Well, chips we already talked about, right? So Matt.
Uh well, the next, the next thing is is the actual snow removal and so, uh well, the salt is.
Oh, yeah.
Now, that's.
Steve, you're you're still on the call, good, thanks. Um this is the line item where we're talking about the real, the money we have to pay to the town for salt and sand, I believe, right, Bob?
Yes.
And and we. Yeah, go ahead.
I haven't gotten the the bill yet uh from Joe, so I I don't know where we stand. I know the price of salt went down uh this year, so even though we've used quite a bit this year, I think we're still gonna be uh okay with the the thirty thousand. But again, that's something, the year before, you saw we only used twenty thousand because it was such a light winter. But you, it's so unpredictable, I hate to say, oh, let's drop it to twenty and then bang, we get, you know, we get a a horrendous uh winter like we got this year, so um that's why I'm kinda comfortable with thirty and then I just added making it thirty three, I added um any type of maintenance on the the plows, the um the the si- the Sanders on our trucks and also any type of maintenance uh on the um Kubota, the tractor, which I know the new tractor won't need much, but it's still I like to go in and have it, you know, tuned up and stuff like that.
All right, but isn't there an issue we have that uh we get two bills from the town every year and last year we got s- we got surprised with
Just one.
I guess, just one bill and then the second bill came to us this this year, so.
I've asked Joe to make sure everything, uh uh hopefully, we're not gonna use much more sand this year. Um salt rather, and I've asked him for this bill, he just hasn't, he hasn't gotten it to me.
All right, fine. All right, so you're talking to Joe, that that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get that and and that'll update it, that'll update it. Uh we didn't use any, uh we didn't use the town for any snow removal this year. Um I don't think we used them last year either, so that that also kept the uh kept the price down for this year.
So, Bob, if you can, can you just um try and get that bill from the town by the May meeting, so we can pay it?
Oh, yeah, I I I'm gonna, I'll give him a call, I think I handed him all my figures a few weeks ago, so he should be he should be just about done with that, I would think. I'll call him tomorrow.
So so Steve, that that's the request, that we get the town's final numbers for snow and and, I mean, for salt and sand that uh we purchased from you for the winter. All right.
Yeah, um I I, there's been some discussion about that issue and not only uh what you guys purchase from us, but what others do also. And uh I I I know the way, from what I heard, and I didn't hear specifics so much, um we want to uh talk to you about uh that. I'm not sure what indeed we're gonna uh um ask you to do, but I I think I think uh our highway department isn't, isn't happy with the way we're doing it now. Uh they, we feel as though we can't have somebody sit there indulge out salt and and make a good estimate as to how much is taken each time and uh it's just uh an issue that we wanna talk to you about before, and I don't have any particulars right this minute, but before we put this, before you guys put this uh budget to bed, we gotta talk about that. I know, I know Gary and Joe are are insisting upon that. The other thing we haven't discussed at all, but I know when we pay our bills, it's tough for us to uh to uh come around to is uh the court, okay? You guys get court fees, okay, uh that we collect. We don't get them, okay, and so we're running that court entirely as an extent, meaning the judges self, the court secretary, and I guess just, we need to discuss.
Okay, so Steve, um I um don't understand the specifics of what you're talking about, obviously, I don't like the tone of either of them, so. Let's take it offline and uh let's resolve it, but we gotta do it before we close the budget, so it's gonna be like a this month discussion, all right?
Okay.
But I need you to take the lead in terms of when we're gonna get together and what the issues are gonna be to discuss.
Okay.
And that's for both these issues we're talking about, all right, because all we want is, we want the bills for the salt and the sand that we take from the town before we close the uh fiscal year.
I win.
This month, it's gotta be March, because we're gonna, we're shooting, you have a public hearing of the budget by the first week of uh April.
Okay. Okay.
And 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 as far as the the looking at how much salt we take, Jones has never had any problem with me. I I, this is all all news to me, in fact, we um we made some adjustments last year, um and he seemed very happy with them and he hasn't.
All right, so let's wait for the meeting to find out just what the issues are.
I'm gonna talk to Joe about it.
All right, fine. All right, so Bob, go ahead.
All right, so I guess that's uh and then the last line is the shade tree commission and we just left that the same.
Well, what about the lighting? The lighting goes up?
I don't know what, I I have nothing to do with that.
That's just the street lighting bill for the streetlights.
So why'd it go up to forty four hundred from last year's budget?
Thirty two hundred.
But it looks like the prior year was thirty three thousand and we're not finished with this year.
Oh, I see, okay, all right, okay. All right, that is.
That's the electric usage, I'm assuming.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right.
And uh shade tree stayed the same.
Yep.
And uh that's just about all I have.
Let's go to the to the dump, the next page. The dump truck.
Oh, okay. Um well, that's the uh, that's the new dump truck that we just purchased. And I guess uh those are the installment payments. I'm not sure how she, how she has that broken down.
All right, so Karen, can you explain that? Why was there four entries there as opposed to just two?
Uh principal and interest and is there two dump trucks?
Yeah, what's what's the difference between dump and dump two?
There's two trucks.
Oh, we're still, yes, we're still paying on uh the last year on the uh two thousand nineteen.
Is that right? So so the first two lines are the two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Um you're saying that's the last year for that payment?
I believe so, yes.
I could double check.
Yeah, I think that was a three payment. I think that we did that for three payments.
Is that right? Okay. And so the um, the new dump truck, so that's the uh payment in interest for the the new truck. And that's the first of four years for that?
Yes.
Okay, and you've also got a ten thousand here for the equipment reserve, can we really afford to put the equip- equipment reserve in here?
Um that's what what it was last year, I didn't put that in either, I, we hadn't talked about that, yeah. I think she just put that in from.
That could, that could be kind of one of the soft costs that you discuss at the end, once you have everything in to see what you can afford to put in.
Okay, so we'll keep it there now as a placeholder, but then we'll talk about uh that being.
But you may wanna reduce it while you're making this last payment on the dump or something like that.
I see, okay, for this year, yeah, okay. All right, so then the totals, so.
They don't have salaries, there's nothing in it, sal- on the salary.
Let's put the same hundred eighty thousand we've got up there for this year. So if you do that.
By the way.
Five oh eight, what changed from what I was tracking down here, let's see? Yeah, can you go to just the top, let's see the list of what's changed? So three thousand twenty three hundred, thirty two hundred, six hundred, twenty six hundred.
I think that this, I mean, this, this eighteen thousand was up here, but it it still is a bit more. But this is a bit less, so.
I'm looking at the sheet that you, that you sent out beforehand, which totaled two twenty fifty thousand nine hundred and six dollars. And I, all I added to that was a hundred eighty thousand. And I, all I added to that was 180,000.
Uh, does it have the long-term debt? It probably doesn't have the streetlights and, and the shade tree.
Oh, is that right?
Probably.
Okay. Oh, it didn't have the chips, wait a minute.
And the, and the chips is a wash.
Yeah, right. Oh, because that should be in there too, okay.
Yeah, I mean, even though we account for it in revenue, we still need to budget for it.
Yeah. You get, you get reimbursed on the revenue side, but you understand.
Right.
So the bottom line is, um, the request is to go from 462,000 to 509,000. For a 10% increase.
Wait, look, uh, that doesn't seem right, but.
What, what doesn't seem right, I guess, is what?
Yeah, I, I just, I didn't do any major increases, I, well, the lighting, I can't, I, I didn't realize that was even in there, but.
So, uh, since we're just doing this worksheet, maybe we can take out the lighting and the shade tree.
Well, actually, why isn't the fact that the new highway dump truck is there, which is an additional 24,000? That's half of it.
Right.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
So we're talking about $50,000 increase, half of it is the new dump truck. And where's the other half?
I think, let's see, do, do this vehicle repair and maintenance, and these additional lines, are they subtracted from the above one?
That's why I say I think there's something in there twice, where we broke it down, but I think she still put.
Like this, this supplies pertains just to the, um, central garage, just to the building itself, so you might want to take a look and see if that 18,000 is what you want just for that, and if that does, if that includes these two items that you have in streets down here.
Yeah, I'll look at that a little bit closer.
Okay.
I think she put, I, I have a funny feeling, we broke something down, we have the breakdowns, and then still the, the, I don't know, something doesn't look right.
Now, why don't you take a look at the new line, line items that you created, the vehicle repair and maintenance, and then the two 1,500s, and see if you think you might still have those in that supply line up there.
That's what I'm kind of thinking, that she might have done it that way.
Yeah, actually.
Everything else is down, I mean, other than, yeah, everything else went down, as best I could.
Well, if you just go to the top of the chart. So, uh, 4,000 is down at 1,000 to 3,000, the 2,300 is down 10,000. Then the next real change is you dropped 4,000 out of repairs and maintenance from 6,000 to 2,000, but you added in the 18,000, right? So that's a net add of about 4,000. One down, um, dropped out 4,500, dropped out 1,500, increased 3,500, but then you go down to this vehicle repair and maintenance, you added in 15,000 right there. So when I add those up, and also the lights, up another 3,000, I get 20,000.
Yeah, I took the lights out just to.
All right, but I'm just, just looking at the, at the, what it was before.
Right.
Yeah, so those deltas, Bob, that pretty much cover it, it's in there. So you go back and see if there's any double counting going on there?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to go back over that.
All right, so best case scenario, though, we're talking about a 5% increase primarily because, or solely because of the new dump truck.
Yeah.
And the question is, is it 5% or is it 10% or something in between there?
Okay, we'll work on that. You know, the dump truck, we can't do anything about it, that's.
I know, that's a done deal.
Yeah.
Um.
And I could do a little bit more trimming here and there, I think.
All right, I'd like you to look and see what you can trim, but I don't want to do anything suicidal, like put a number in there that you know you're not going to make.
No, no, I won't do that.
Okay, all right, so go back and look at the numbers, um, and see what you can offer to try to cover at least that remaining 5%, if you can.
Yeah, I want to, I just want to talk with Nicole a little bit and see if we, if we did a double dip on something.
Okay, so, um.
Bob, I'm sorry, Bob, can you just keep me, um, in the loop on the new items and what you plan on charging to them, so I can create the appropriate sub-account for that?
You got it.
Thank you.
That's not a problem.
Okay, anybody else have suggestions of things that we could, we look at culture as far as reductions?
No, I think Bob's done a pretty good job of looking realistically at what he had for last year and what he expects to have for next year, and, you know, some of those items like $5,500 for a new plow that's 11 years old, uh, you know, the $24,000 essentially for the new truck, those, those new things are not something that, you know, we, uh, could say, well, we really shouldn't have put it in there. I mean, the old dump truck was from 1992, so, you know, they're just part of the budget. We may not have anticipated a third year of payments on the other 2019 truck, if, so they got two truck payments in the same budget. But other than that, the things that he's asking for are certainly reasonable and things that I would expect.
Well, so first off, the dump trucks, it's done, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that, right? Those are here, and we're going to pay those debts. The plow, I could see having a discussion with Bob about one more year or whatever, that, that's something I'd be willing to have a discussion with, but not the dump trucks, that's. So, so let, so first off, let's let Bob go back and scrub the numbers, and come back to us through Karen with what the updated spreadsheet looks like, and let's see if, how far off we are, all right?
Okay.
I mean, as, as in all these, as we go to the police and also to the front office, we're basically going to take the numbers that they give us, massage whatever we can, but basically then put it all together and throw it up against what Karen and Sarah say the outlook is for the revenue minus the tax levy, and we'll see how far we off, off we are, all right?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding the highway, uh, budget that Bob has proposed?
No, we have a dump, an old dump truck that we're going to sell that could generate a little bit of revenue, maybe to go towards like the snowplow or something like that, the new Kubota or something?
Uh, absolutely, we, we're, uh, that's going as soon as the new one is on the road, which should be this week. Um, we're going to put that out to bid, and, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful of getting 3,000 to 4,000 dollars for it.
Okay, so that can almost cover the new plow. Almost, okay, all right.
Also, Bob, if you're doing it that, that soon, then it's possible that you can take the difference and see where you're at with this year's budget, and maybe get it done in this year, this fiscal year.
Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Counting towards this year's budget, which, by the way, uh, had to bring this up. We had a discussion at the, uh, when we did the, uh, first half of the year assessment for the current fiscal year, and we had to put in the budget to do a replacement of the oil burner for the hall. I think it's like $13,000, right, Bob?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
And we, um, I had a discussion with the vendor who said he'd like to wait until it's warmer weather, when he can shut it down for four days, so we can do a, a full replacement and not have an interruption of any of the services here. And so what I suggested to the board was that we hold off on making the replacement until we get closer to the end of the fiscal year to determine whether or not we've got enough money in this year's budget. And if so, do it this year, and if we don't have enough money in this year's budget, we push it to next year. Now, obviously, it's great to be talking about that, how we can save money this year, but all it does is defer the expense till next year. So I guess the question I have for Karen is, where are we year-to-date? And are we in, in the ballpark to be able to have the replacement of the oil burner, which needs to be done in the village hall this year in the spring, this fiscal year? Or delay it to next fiscal year, in which case that'll be an additional expense, I guess that's not a highway discussion anyway, that's a front office thing.
Right.
Isn't it?
Yeah, the, the money for that was going to come out of some of different areas of the front office.
That's right, okay.
Instead, so that's.
Well, I'm ahead of myself in that discussion, well, let's hold it off till Wednesday.
Right.
I thought of Bob, because Bob, Bob, but for the, the estimate, but you're right, it's a highway, it's a front office discussion, not a highway discussion. Okay, so in that case, any other discussions about Bob's highway proposal?
Yeah.
Now, can I ask a personal favor?
Sure.
Does anyone know of, or, or have someone for their business that, um, can debug a computer? I need a good computer person.
You're talking about your home, your, your home computer?
Yeah, my home, my home computer has been, um, hacked to the point where they can, I'm watching the arrow move by itself.
Oh, that's bad, you know?
Yes.
We just recently had to use, um, Best Buy's Geek Squad.
Yeah.
They were fast, they're comprehensive, and they're an insurance program that you can buy so that it covers any repairs that you may need, because hacking, you, you have a PC probably, it's getting very prevalent, so.
Yeah, that's what I heard, so they were, I, I, I thought about them, but I didn't know if they were really, you know, how efficient that it would be, but.
I haven't tried a lot of other people, but I thought they were pretty good.
Yeah, I've used them in my house for, for one or two things, and both occasions, I was very pleased with their expertise and their, uh, performance.
All right, well, I'll try the commercial route, but I'm not turning it on again until it's, it's fixed.
Good for you.
Oh, gosh, I couldn't believe it.
And, and, and please don't tap in to get your email through the village system either while you got.
Now, it's, everything's strictly phone now. For a while, okay, I appreciate your input.
All right, good luck. Okay, any other questions or comments before we end the meeting?
That was very comprehensive, thanks, Bob.
You're welcome, thank you for the time.
Okay, I guess I should ask for a motion to end the meeting, any motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Steve, thanks for showing up, Bob, thanks for your time, we'll talk to you all later, take care.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Right.